Looks like other people are starting to join. And it's about time to call the meetings of order. Okay, it's seven oh two, at least I'll call the December ninth twenty twenty ZB A meeting to order. My name is Ed Stevens, the chairman, also friend by Zoom are Tom Manning, the secretary for Floyd Kravitz by phone. Scott Losato in person and Mr. Bill Munzer, alternate member and also alternate member, Jack Smith. What we'll do on the first hearing is that Mr. Munzer was here as were the rest of us. So he will be sitting in on the Garden Middle School. And then I'll have Mr. Smith be the seated for the Hammond residence application of the three. Okay, so first off, there are three items on the agenda. One of them has been withdrawn, and I think rather than have somebody hang around if they're listening in, is to have Mr. Manning read the email from Steny Sweeney to Mrs. Zanari withdrawing.
All right, give me a minute to find it.
Okay. What if we hung up and called again?
All right.
Floyd, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Floyd.
Oh, okay, I thought you just couldn't hear me.
No, we can hear you.
Talking for fifteen minutes and nobody answered.
No, you were muted.
Well, that's why.
Okay, Ed, you want me to read the letter or memo from William Sweeney, the attorney for, this was for the, let's see, Crystal Lake Public Hearing?
Yes, please.
Please accept this email as formal request to withdraw the pending variance application for AR Building Company, Inc. We are going back to the drawing board to try to redesign the project, drop the building height, and address the concerns of the sub base. William Sweeney was signed Bill William Sweeney, and that's dated as of Thursday, December third. It looks like it was sent.
Okay.
So that has been withdrawn then.
All right, so we can go back to the Garden Middle School. This was originally presented to us on October fourteenth, continue to October twenty eighth. From the twenty eighth to November eighteenth, and from November eighteenth to December ninth, which is today. So Tom Zanari, where are we?
We have Rick Norris will continue with his presentation.
Okay, so Mr. Norris?
He's muted, he doesn't know yet.
Rick Norris?
Can you hear us? Hey, I'm there, I was muted, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Yep. Thank you again for hearing what we have to say about this. We did go off, as you suggested, the additional homework on the situation. I have with me tonight Amy Samuelson again from the SLAM Collaborative, who was our architect on the project, the Grotten Middle School project, and also Jason Williams from Mylone and McBroom, who's their resident sign person and can explain some of these to you. So what I wanted to do first was go back to the letter from the planning department, or from P and Z, and catch you up on a couple of those things that we discovered along the way. And then the architect and Mr. Williams will carry on and go into the rest of the items. As the P and Z said, they were not in support of the variance. They're concerned additional signage. In that particular case, we'd like to withdraw our application for a variance of section eight point four point eight B, three signs in the in the frontage of the GR property, the Sutton Park. I can submit that writing after this meeting. I was waiting for a response from the from the building official on an interpretation of a regulation with that. We've also talked to the state about a comprehensive sign program with them. We talked with the principal or representative of Arcadis, who has also worked with their project in the building of the Grassroots Tech School. So they started with their project manager, went to the principal, ultimately went to the superintendent of those technical schools, and we never got a final response from them. So, I mean, we we made the attempt, but we weren't successful of coming to any kind of agreement with those folks. So our best effort at this point was to remove that variance, the first one for three signs. I did, like I said, talk to the building official, and we did get a determination on on the section for internal signs. In the drawing that you see that was attached and the photographs that were attached to our original application show that sign being moved into the property, which causes it to be an internal sign. And the building official has determined that to be the case. So we now have two signs on the front, so we can withdraw the application.
Rick, if I can just interrupt, it's technically, it's Pete is acting as the zoning official there. So it's the zoning official's determination.
Okay. So so we're there, you can look at the photographs, we did that, we did some additional work on it, we did some placements. The sign expert from MMI is going to go and the architect will go into some of these other variances, but we'd like to remove the first request, which was for the three signs, because we now have, we'll have two in place. So unless you need some additional information on that, I will, I can provide a written request to remove that first item, and I can turn it over to SLAM and and Jason Williams from MMI. And let them go through the rest of the application with you, and I'll tell you where we stand on those things. Is that acceptable for you?
Could I ask, could I ask a question? Is the sign, is the middle school sign being moved further in, or is it the?
If you if you haven't had an opportunity to look at those pictures, the Grassroots Tech, I mean, not the Grassroots Tech, I'm sorry, I get too many signs. The Sutton Park sign has been moved back into the property alongside the trees, alongside the sidewalk. I talked to the, worked with the department head for the recreation department to see what best suited him. He thought that was a better gateway, if you will, into the Sutton Park property. So we moved, we moved that sign there, and it's seventy feet, sixty nine plus feet off off the road. So it's well into the property.
So that's the sign that you're referring to?
So that was the third sign, we were trying to figure out how to come up with this program.
Okay.
There's also a program with the state for wayfinding and working with the planning department on their wayfinding things to determine if if wayfinding signs are appropriate. They have a program, we would have signs in the state right away showing where Sutton Park is also. So that, that's pretty much that issue. So now we're down to the basically the two signs. And like you said, I'll let SLAM and MMI address those remaining requests for variance.
Thanks, Rick. So thank you again, this is Amy Samuelson from the SLAM Collaborative. Thanks for having us tonight. I believe that our presentation from the last time we we ran through the signs, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So we ran through the design of the proposed sign for Grotten Middle School. That remains the same, that's the sign that we're looking to get approval on tonight. The information that we have added to this presentation, and I believe is in your packet, are some 3D perspective views which show the existing intersection where the El Agrosso sign and the new proposed Grotten Middle School sign will be located. And if I could have the administrator of this meeting, please allow Jason Williams to be a presenter. Jay is one of, as as mentioned by Rick, is a landscape architect at Mylone and McBroom, and there he's going to present those 3D renderings. Great, thank you. Shall I run through the other variance requests first? Is that, would the commission like me to do that? Should the same as we presented at the first hearing two months ago?
That would be helpful, I think, to refresh our memory.
Okay, happy to do that. So as Rick mentioned, we're withdrawing the the need or the request for the first variance on our list, which was section eight point four dash eight point A. We, in that same section, though, we we do need a variance on the allowable size for this new sign. The new proposed sign does exceed the allowable size for signage in this zone. And Jason will present images of the sign and how it relates to the existing El Agrosso Tech High School sign, and why we think that the size that we're proposing is acceptable. And then there's a variance request for allowing a digital sign in this GR zoning district. That's not a signage type that's currently allowed by your regulations. But as you know, the El Agrosso Technical High School does have a digital sign, so we're requesting the same just to to allow for a Grotten Middle School to be similar on that same location. And the two other variance requests that we have are to, in regards to that digital sign, we are looking for you to allow it to be larger than a digital sign in your zoning regs. And then, secondly, on the digital sign, we'd, we would allow, request that you allow for more than two colors. Because as you know, digital signs today are not just dots on a black screen. They are actually like a television digital monitor. So when the school controls what message goes on the digital sign, they may choose one color one day, or they may choose a different color another day. So those are the requests that are being made. The site plan that we had shared with you in the past shows the requested location of the sign on the north side, no, sorry, on the west side of the driveway. And if you go to the to the next page of our new application, this is a new site plan that we've brought for tonight's meeting. And that shows the exact location of the proposed sign, as well as the plantings around it. And I'll let Jason take over from here.
Yeah, sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes, great. Well, my name is Jason Williams. As Amy said, I'm a landscape architect with Mylone and McBroom. One of the things that I specialize in is wayfinding and gateway signage in urban and suburban and rural areas. So SLAM and and Rick really thought it'd be a good idea to bring me in on the project. Just a little bit of history, as I as I started to look at the project, obviously, LT Grasso sign is very, very large, which I understand doesn't meet your regulations. So I thought, well, boy, starting off driving, you know, either eastbound or westbound on Fort Hill, we've got to somehow find a way to incorporate the middle school sign with the technical school sign. Well, we obviously can't do that, because then we've got this really giant monolithic sign, which doesn't even come close to meeting your standards. And the reason I said that is because the existing technical school sign is so large that it takes full ownership of that intersection. It essentially is a beacon and says, this entrance and exit belongs to me and me only, which is why adding the middle school sign to it would make a lot of sense. But since we can't do that, what we've got to do is we've got to give the middle school signage equal ownership of that intersection, or the entrance and the exit into into the site. And we do that really basically, if you remember on the last plan, creating the triangulation from the center of the intersection to both of these signs. So we have a really identified triangle. So whichever way you're driving, both signs have equal merit and ownership of Ring Road. Now, we would typically design the same sized sign for both sides of the road. But because we can't do that, we've got to kind of fake it. And the way that we're we're proposing to fake it is to install the sign, as Amy currently has proposed, but include some additional landscaping on the ends of it, to take some of the massing away from the technical sign and bring it over to our sign. Additionally, though, we don't want to completely contrast these two signs, because the font style, the colors are doing that for that. We want to essentially create a link between them, and we're doing that through landscaping. So the existing LT Grasso sign has liriope, liriope ground cover planted at the base. We are proposing to bring that liriope, which is a small ground cover, looks like ornamental grass, over to our sign as well. Additionally, we want to match distances from the edge of road as closely as we possibly can between LT Grasso sign and our proposed sign. So we did a couple of perspective renderings so that we could see exactly how this would look as you're coming from both eastbound and westbound. And here you can see, heading down the roadway, what's interesting about this is, look at how many poles. There's a lot of poles along the roadway, which we can't do anything about. But our sign is starting to take shape and equal some of the mass that the LT Grasso sign is taking. If you go to the next image there. Pan out just a little bit, yeah, there we go. We see equal massing on both sides of the entrance and exit, giving equal ownership to both uses. And then adding the landscaping so that we can kind of bring in, you know, some of the massing of LT Grasso sign. So now additionally, in order to do this, because I, as I mentioned, there's so many telephone poles out there, there's an existing tree, as you can see, in the dashed line on the left hand side. Keeping this tree would, could be a problem and somewhat detract visually as you're moving in a vehicle to identifying these signs. So we're proposing to remove that sign. So we really have clear airspace all around our proposed sign, since LT Grasso sign has that as well. And on the right hand side, just from across the street, you can see both signs, signs anchoring the entrance into the site.
So you're saying that you're proposing to remove that tree?
Yes. If the tree remains with the veg, with the leaves on it, it creates essentially a ceiling or a canopy to that sign, and will make the sign harder to see when you're moving down the roadway at twenty five, thirty five, thirty miles an hour. Now additionally, when I was first brought on, we had talked about the park sign. And you can barely see it, but over on the right hand side is the existing Sutton Park sign. And obviously, if this is to remain in the location that it currently does, there's too much signage going on, which is why we propose to move it in, you know, inside of the park. This is actually a much better option as well, because as you're driving by, you'll see this sign, you'll see, you'll really see three things. You'll see the pedestrian walkway, you'll see how that relates to the sign, and you'll see the three plantings of small understory trees there. All three of those things will create that gateway and almost an iconic kind of entrance to the park. Also, if you can imagine driving down the roadway, you're seeing this on your right hand side, and this is tying into the 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 park space across the street. So it, you know, from a, from a design language, it's kind of incorporating both sides of the roadway. And then, as Rick had mentioned, further up the roadway on both sides, having small DOT level wayfinding signage that says Sutton Park with an arrow to the right, going this way, going, coming down the hill the opposite way. You'd have Sutton Hill Park with an arrow to the left, which would give you enough time as your foot is leaving the gas, starting to hover over the brake. As you're coming to the intersection, you already are aware that you need to be turning into Ring Road to enter Sutton Park. So that helps to kind of take any of your subconscious thinking off of what it, what signage is coming up at this intersection. You've already learned that Sutton Park is up on the right or the left. As you make your way closer to the signal light, you then have the opportunity to see and read what's on the technical school sign and the middle school sign.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions from the landscape architect? Scott?
No.
Tom Manning?
No, I I haven't got any at this time.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Amy, could you come back on, please? We did not receive revise during the course of, could you go back over and say exactly what is being stricken?
Sure.
Let's start with, what is it? So much paperwork now. Let's start with eight point four dash seven D, that's staying as is?
Eight point four dash seven D is staying as is, correct.
Okay, how about the one above it?
The one above it is also staying as is.
So both of those are staying as is, only upon the?
The very top one is what's being removed. Let me on the screen. I can show it this way.
Okay, here it is. So eight point four dash eight point A, that that one is being removed in its entirety?
That's correct. I believe there are actually two variance requests in regards to section eight point four dash eight point A.
Yes, so the top one is coming out completely.
Correct.
And the bottom one?
The next one down, we still need that variance request. We are over the size limitation.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Amy?
No, not, not for me.
Scott?
No.
No, okay.
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Norris, do you have anything else to add?
I don't believe so. I think between the multiple discussions we had, we pretty much covered things. You know, we look, as we drive around town, we see, as Amy stated, other, the others, three signs that we see around town with the various colors that are selectable, not necessarily ten colors all at one time, but being able to select those based on the material that that's shown here. We did, we did, I think, meet your folks' requirements of doing the extra homework, if you will, to to, you know, look at other options and how, and what the best option for the site is. And we believe with Amy's help and Jason's help, that we've come up with a, with a plan that's suitable. We certainly like to have that entryway noticed as an entryway to the middle school, as well as as Grassroots Tech. I guess I have not much more to add, unless you have any additional questions. So, thank you.
Okay, Tom Manning, any questions with Mr. Norris?
No, I, so far, I I think I'm in concurrence with going from three signs to two. That was in the back of my mind when you guys first came. It didn't make any sense, since that other sign is under the purview of the town, why they couldn't be either combined or possibly what you finally did. And that's move it so that it wasn't conforming to a sign that would have been making up the third sign. So so far, I'm in sync.
Mr. Kravitz, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Scott?
I'm all set.
Okay, Bill Munzer?
Agreed, I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Smith, any questions?
Um, just, just a comment here. And I don't know if, if, since I'm not sitting, whether you want me, I'm allowed to comment on this or not. So you tell me.
If you have a question, yes, that's okay.
Well, it's more a comment, because I was on the zoning commission when the new zoning regs were adopted. So I'm familiar with the the rationale for size of signs and number of colors. And of course, the variance requested here wants a variance to all of those standards. So when the zoning commission took it up, there was a feeling that too many colors, too much busyness in the sign would be distracting to drivers. So that was their rationale when the current zoning regulations were adopted.
Thank you. Okay, if there's something else, I guess we'll call public hearing on this matter close at seven thirty. And we are set to move on to ZB A twenty dash zero eight. And in this case, I'm seeing Mr. Smith to be part of this application.
Okay.
Okay, if we can get screens back, get rid of all of the middle school information.
Thank you.
There we go, that's great. Okay. All right, Mr. Manning, if you can read the call for ZB A twenty dash zero eight.
Okay, give me a minute. Okay. This is the Aspie Street Public Hearing. Okay, the call of the public hearing, ZB A twenty dash oh eight, Aspie Street, Peter J. Springsteen applicant, Ryan and Cheryl Hahn. Ryan and Cheryl Harmon owners for variances of section 3.2-1A to reduce the front yard setback from 10 feet to zero feet for a dormer addition and to six feet 11 inches for a porch addition to reduce the north side yard setback from six feet to two feet for building and deck additions. Reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to four feet 8 inches for a deck addition and to 12 feet 6 inches for a building addition and to increase the maximum building coverage from 35%, 962 square feet to 40.4%, 1,109 square feet for porch and deck additions. Pin number 261806390587, R7 zoning district. And for the record, the mailings have been reviewed by myself earlier today, and they were found to be in order. So we're set to proceed.
Mr. Springsteen?
Yes. Good evening all. Peter Springsteen, architect here tonight. And I'm representing the owners of 8 Ashby Street. That's Ryan and Cheryl Harmon. And I think they're on, on the meeting list here, watching in on what we're doing. Let's see, I can share the screen, I guess. Okay, I wanted to show you some pictures of this house before I show you the location, so you get a sense of what's there. Can you see the screen okay?
Yes. I can, yes.
Okay. So this is the existing house. And you can see here, there was a deck on here just very recently. We tore it down because it was unsafe to get it out of the way, so nobody would walk on it. So this is from sort of the back corner. And you can see the road, Ashby Street is up here. And then this lot slopes down pretty steeply to our backyard, which is right here. And then there's another shot at the back. Another shot of the back. This view is from Ashby Street. It's, Ashby Street, as you know, is a one-way street going north. And this is looking from the south. And it's got a dormer on it right there. It's a historic home. And there's another view from the south. This is more from directly on the street. And then this is more from the north, looking from Ashby Street. So one thing to note before I move on to the drawings is the front of this house sits right on the property line. So in effect, this roof overhang is probably approaching on the town property line. And then this is a view from the north along the sidewalk of Ashby Street. You can see the backyard down here. And in the very background, there's a, you can see very faintly, there's a retaining wall back there that marks the rear property line of this lot. And then the side property line pretty much falls through this tree and along this fence here. So needless to say, this property has a lot of non-conformities. And we'll show you that site plan here now. Okay, you should be able now to see the GIS map. This is 8 Ashby Street right here. This is Ashby Street, Noank Road, Latham Street. And what I've done here and read is I've outlined the property lines. So you can see that 8 Ashby Street is tiny beyond anything nearby. Most of the other properties are a little bit bigger. This one here is probably twice the size. This one here is much larger. This here contains, I believe, a garage and a house. So it's a fairly big lot right here. And these four structures all sit sort of up on a hill with a steep drop-off in the back right along here. And then these homes here are set way down low on Noank Road, well below all these structures. So this is our site plan. And to orient you, this is Ashby Street right here. This is the front property line, which you can see goes right along the front face of the existing structure. And then the footprint of the existing structure is this right here. It's very small. I don't know if I can zoom into those dimensions. But the house square footage, the first floor footprint is only 476 square feet. So it's very small. And then there's a deck, an existing deck, which you saw in the photograph that had been removed, that runs along the side and runs along the back. And this red dash line is the outline of that existing deck right there. And then this red solid line, this represents the buildable area of this lot when you look at the setbacks that are permitted for this zone. I believe you have a, hard to read these. I believe that's a 15-foot front yard setback, six-foot side yard setbacks, and a 25-foot rear yard setback. So the existing house doesn't need any of those setbacks, as you can see. And the proposed house doesn't need any of the setbacks either. What we're looking to do is do an addition on the rear of the house, which is this shaded in area right here. And a replacement of the deck that is outlined here. And then this would be a new stairway taking you down from the deck, which is at street level, more or less, down to the backyard, which is the whole story down. And then this is your side property line and your rear property line and your other side property line. And then the grade here drops off eight to 10 feet or so to the neighboring property. Here we have an existing first floor plan. So this is what exists today, at 472 square feet or whatever it is in footprint. This is the proposed first floor plan. So again, you can see the addition here. That's going to have a kitchen, a living, half bath. It's still a very modest footprint for homes in this neighborhood. And then this is our deck replacing the old one. This drawing here is the second floor, existing second floor. And all that was up there were two small bedrooms and a little bathroom right here. And when we do this addition, we would rework that whole space to maintain the two bedrooms and a bath. But then we would add a third bedroom over the first floor addition here. There's also a walkout basement due to the sloping lot. And we are enclosing that area under the proposed addition for more space here where you can walk out into the backyard. And then this structure here is a new retaining wall so that they can now park off the street. There currently is no way to park on this lot. So you're forced to park on this street, which is pretty narrow. So this retaining wall would create a flat area where we can park two cars, which is something your regulations require. Here are building elevations. This is your front view from Ashby Street, existing. And then this is the new. And what's new here is this dormer and this porch, covered porch. So there's a deck there presently, and we're putting a roof over it. This elevation is the right side south elevation, existing. And so you can see our proposed addition here, the deck and the extended porch roof right here. And then this would be our retaining wall offset to the backyard. Existing rear elevation, proposed rear elevation. And you can see the addition is this piece right here. We've stepped the addition in on both sides to some degree to lessen the effect of the mass as you come down Ashby Street. And then this view is the existing north elevation. And then this is our addition and our deck addition to that main structure. So we have several variances here. Sorry that there's so many. And here I have summarized the variances and the hardships that we're seeking. So our first variance is the front yard setback requirement. The front yard requirement is 10 feet, and we're seeking zero feet. And that is for the proposed dormer that we're doing on the north side of the building. So there's already a dormer. On the south side, we're mimicking that on the north side. We're going to keep the overhang back so that there's no further encroachment into the town property. And then we're seeking 6'11" for the proposed porch roof on the right side south of the addition. So both of those items encroach in. And in this, for this variance, the hardship is that the lot is pre-existing non-conforming in size at 2,748 square feet. Really tiny. In lieu of the required 7,000 square feet, the existing building front yard setback is pre-existing non-conforming at 0'0". The existing second floor is within a roof line set on two-foot-tall cripple walls, limiting the usable space. The non-conforming building location limits this otherwise allowable addition. Second variance we're seeking is for the side yard setback. And that side yard is only on the north side of this property. The south yard, side yard setback is conforming. And here, we're looking to reduce the required side yard setback at the north boundary from six feet to two feet for a proposed building and deck addition. So that addition on the rear of the house and the deck itself are both in that non-conforming. Hardship here is that, again, the lot is pre-existing non-conforming in size. The existing building side yard setback is pre-existing non-conforming at about, at about 2'3". So the proposed setback at the proposed addition at two feet at the overhang is nominally the same as the existing. And the non-conforming building location and lot size limits the location of a proposed addition. And then our third variance request is for a reduction in the rear yard setback. The script description here is the rear yard setback, we're requesting a reduction from 25 feet to 4'8" for a proposed deck addition and 12'6" for a proposed building addition. So building addition and the deck both intrude upon the rear yard setback. Hardship here is that the subject lot is pre-existing non-conforming in size. Again, the existing lot depth is only 46 feet and 43 feet respectively. And that's set the two sides, the north and side, south boundaries. And when taken with the required 10-foot front yard setback and 25-foot rear yard setback, only leaves an average of nine foot six deep for the building, buildable area. This unique feature, the depth of the lot, causes a hardship for this lot. And then the last variance request is for maximum building coverage. The allowable is 35%. We're seeking to increase that to 40.4% for a total footprint of 1,109 square feet. This is for the porch and deck addition. The subject lot, this is the hardship, is pre-existing non-conforming in size. A conforming lot of 7,000 square feet provides an allowable building coverage of 2,450 square feet. Existing building and proposed building porch additions meet the allowable building coverage. So again, the existing building and the addition that we're proposing still meet the lot coverage requirement. But the proposed elevated deck addition adds the additional 11.5%. No, that's not right. The deck itself adds, brings us over the allowable lot coverage. And the deck within, the other thing to note is a deck within 30 inches of grade is not considered as part of the building coverage calculation. In this case, the proposed decks are elevated above 30 inches due to the extreme slope of this unusually small lot. So again, our deck is the thing that we're seeking for the additional lot coverage, along with the little porch, covered porch area. And that's to, to the sloping nature of this lot. So essentially, that is my explanation for what we're trying to do here. And I'm ready for your questions.
Okay, Mr. Saro.
Is that me?
Yes.
Well, it, it's a lot, it's a lot to, to digest at this point. And but, I mean, the lot itself, the existing lot is so small. I don't know how you do anything with that lot. In, in terms of the, is, is there any way, Peter, that you could summarize what, you said you took that old deck down because it was unsafe? That what the coverage that was there when the property was purchased as opposed to what we have now? How much, how much bigger will the new addition, the added structures be as opposed to what was there previous?
Let's see. I have a zoning chart here, and I finally figured out how to blow it up. And the existing lot coverage is 32.39%. 890 square feet.
But, but does that include the, the old deck that you took down?
Yes, it does.
All right.
The house itself is only 476.
Right.
And sorry. Here we go. And so what we're proposing in the lot coverage is 1,109 square feet. So yeah, the, the extra 11% is all in the deck here.
In the deck, and that because that's 30 inches back there because it drops off precipitously back there, correct?
Right. So if you remove the deck, the house and the addition meet the lot coverage requirement.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Tom Manning?
I've read someplace that the house was built originally in, what, 1824? Is that correct?
That's about right. That's about right.
So this thing certainly predates the zoning regulations of the town of Groton. I, I did go down and do a site walk today, believe it or not. And I was astounded at the, the house and the lot. And not having gone through the plan until I came back, that is really a unique. And I don't think I've ever seen a situation where a lot, our house was on a lot this small. And I was wondering, I, I was checking because I didn't, I had to park in the street, and I didn't recall any parking spaces. So Peter, you put two in, and clearly they're, they're necessary. But I, I don't really have any questions with this. I, I think clearly, you're really, if you want to see something unique to the town of Groton, this property... see something unique to the town of Groton, this property is. And I think you're enhancing, you're trying to make do with something that is really a very tight building lot on a tight street. And I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Mr. Crawford, is there any questions?
I don't have any.
You don't have any? Okay, Mr. Minister.
Wasn't she going to have Doug sit in on this one?
Yeah.
So therefore if he's sitting, I should not ask any questions.
I put questions are okay, it's just a decision.
Yeah. Bill, so it's a public, you can comment or ask questions during the public hearing section, just not during the, when it's closed.
No, I, I, I'm following Scott on this. I thought his questions were right on and, and thank you, Tom. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Doug, do you have any questions?
A couple of questions here. So when, when all is said and done, if this gets built, what's, what's the total living space that you're going to end up with without the decks?
The total living space is first floor, 739. Second floor, 739. And then there's a walkout basement as well.
Okay, and the basement, basement isn't occupied or anything right now, right?
It was finished at one time, but it's in, the whole interior of the house is really bad condition. But part of it was finished, yeah.
And can you explain to me the, the retaining wall you're talking about putting in? I didn't quite understand how that's, how it's going in. Are you building a, a street level parking area? Is that, is that how it's going to come out?
Yeah, see, these are the grades right here. 46, 45, 44, 43.
Yeah.
Goes down to 40 here.
Correct.
And this is 48. So the street's at about 48. So what I'm doing is building a retaining wall here and here. And so we'll make this whole thing at about 48. So we can get two cars in here within the property. And then we'll leave this here so you can still walk down to the backyard. This is an existing retaining wall that wraps around three sides of the property now.
Okay, and that's where you're measuring all your setbacks from? In the rear, rear is the, is that retaining wall, correct?
Right, right. And that's the, the low side of that is the property line. So we're measuring from there.
Okay. And, and on the north side, the two foot or two foot three inch setback is from that? There's a retaining wall there or you said it went right through the tree, right?
Yeah, here's the retaining wall. So there's the property line falls that and then I didn't draw the tree, but the tree's in here.
Okay.
And so here's the two foot to the new overhang. Here's the existing two foot three, the existing overhang.
Okay. And I assume the tree's coming down. Is that, is that accurate?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but it's probably a good idea that it comes down.
Okay.
It's huge and it's close to the house.
And in your, in your practice, I know there are a few houses in that, in the district down there that are right on the road, just like this one is. Do you know approximately how many there are down there?
So there's, here's our site.
Correct.
There's these three here, this one here, this one here. These are all lower.
No, I mean, they have the entrance that are right, it's right on the edge of the property line. I know there's one, it's probably one up on Latham Street and there's probably some, a couple down in Fort Rachel or something.
Yeah, this one here, this is where Landscape Architect's office is right there. That's right on the property line there. This one looks like a couple of feet. This one looks like almost on it.
Yeah.
So there's, there's precedent here. You can see these here. That's the way they used to build them back in the 18s.
I understand, yeah. So in, from, looking at it from my perspective, essentially you're looking, you've got a existing non-conforming use and you just want to make it into a better non-conforming use, correct?
Yes, we want to make it to more viable. I mean, for someone to have a house of 430 square feet or 476 square feet is a little, I mean, you can't even find a condo that small.
Uh, there are places in New York you can, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that answers my questions. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Tom Manning? Do we have any, do you have any correspondence?
You know, I didn't, I'll have to defer to Tom Zanarini. I didn't see anything in the packet. Tom, was there a?
This is Tom Zanarini. Yes, I have two letters here. One was received yesterday and one was received today. Before you open it to the, the public, there are a number, number of people in the attendees that I think would like to speak. So let me read this letter into the record first. Sharon Burrell, 143 Noank Road, dated December 4th, but received today. I have received the information for a variance request on the above property that will be addressed at the public hearing on December 9th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I'm submitting this in writing as I will not be available for Zoom. I may be available for phone-in, but that's not definite. These are my four concerns. One, soil compaction testing, moisture content, gravity test. Can the soil support the load of the proposed project? Has it been tested for A and B above? A being moisture content and B being gravity test? If so, can we read the report? If not, can it be done? Two, was a runoff water study done? If so, can we read the report? If not, can one be done? Number three, the retaining walls adjacent to 143 Noank Road and 137 Noank Road are only approximately six to eight inches thick. The retaining wall at 137 Noank Road has a major crack in it, just about where the post for the deck will be. And number four, what was the opinion on the proposed project by the Historic District Commission? These are my objections. The retaining wall at 143 Noank Road is a major wall that solidifies the land of eight Ashby Street and 143 Noank Road. By shortening the setback from 10 feet to four feet six inches will be too close to the retaining wall. The setback of four feet six inches will infringe on my privacy, which is important to me. I choose to live in this neighborhood because of the quaintness of the area and the characteristic style of the homes. I will respond to number four, was this opinion on the proposed project by the Historic District Commission? It is not. It needs a variance first before it goes to the Historic District Commission. And once the, the ZBA makes a ruling, then the Historic District Commission can accept the application for review.
Can I add to that, that we did go preliminary, preliminarily to HTC and we did get a informal, it looks okay? Just for the record.
Very good. I have another letter from Thomas Tremont that was received yesterday. Thomas is an attendee, so I'll allow him to talk. And if you would like to read his letter into the record, that would be fine. Mr. Chairman, do you, do you want to continue with public comment?
Why didn't you read that letter also?
Okay. From Thomas J. Tremont, owner of 147 Noank Road, December 4th, 2020. It was received to the town on December 8th. Dear members of the ZBA, I am opposed to the rear setback variance request. There is no hardship here that the applicant, new owner, was not aware when he recently purchased the property. If granted, this variances of the zoning laws will effectively eliminate the legal rear yard requirement of 25 feet and replace it with only four feet eight inches. It will be an affront to me and the neighbors to the rear of this property and to all who gaze up from below on Noank Road, which is approximately 160 feet from the rear property line. Obstruction of view of skyline. The proposed structures are only four feet eight inches from the edge of a virtual 10-foot cliff, which is the rear property line. This will result in an over 60-foot high obstruction of the skyline from rear yards of 137 Noank Road. Negative impact on the character of the historic district. All the property owners who have worked to preserve the character of this town's historic district will be negatively impacted by this intrusive towering structure. Water runoff problem. The water runoff created by this new structure will be substantial and will increase the already existing water problems in the houses below. Three-story addition, not two. This addition is actually three stories due to the fact that the so-called basement will be eight feet above grade. I would like all concerned to decline this request. Thank you, Thomas Tremont, owner of 147 Noank Road.
Thank you, Tom. You said there are folks that are wishing to speak?
There are. If they could raise their hands, it's available on a, on Zoom, I can promote them over, but I do recognize Thomas Tremont, so I can, I'll promote him to the panelists and he can speak.
Oh, the problem is the screen is now showing the GS members. Peter?
Yep.
Frank Stilwell? Okay, fine. Mr. Tremont, if you would state your name and address, please? Thomas Tremont?
He's muted right now.
Okay. Who else do we have to speak?
I don't know that you can raise your hand. I see Nancy Potter.
Can you hear me now?
Tremont's on the, unmuted now, so.
Okay, Mr. Tremont?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So I'm Tom Tremont and 147 Noank Road.
Thank you.
I, I bought 147 Noank Road. It's a non-conforming lot. I made do with the size of the lot. I added a small addition, but I didn't encroach, you know, on my neighbor's privacy by what I did and they had no objection to what I did. It seems to me that there's other ways of solving their, their problem. Incidentally, the, the first floor is 470 square feet and the, and the second floor is 470 square feet. So it's an 800 square, 900 square foot house. I, I think to call it 470 square feet total is, is incorrect. But there, you know, there's other ways of approaching the, the livability in addition to this house. You know, and, and one of those is possibly going over the, the parking. And rather than, you know, in, intruding in the, there's reasons for backyard setbacks. You know, and it's about privacy. It's about having space, about having your own space. And, and, and this is just, you know, because of the houses below, we can't move our houses and, and, you know, it, it's just oppressive. And, and I, I, you know, urge the, the owners to, to look at a, at a different direction. And so that, you know, we're not having something is, is intrusive to look at in our backyards. That's all I have to say.
Ah, yes, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Let me, again, I don't see anyone raising their hand, but I'm going to promote some people over to see if they have anything to say. That's Elizabeth Lutz. Elizabeth, you're muted. If you'd like to unmute and say something? Not hearing. Nancy Potter, you're available? Let's just give them a minute to see if they need to.
Nancy Potter just unmuted here.
This is Larry Potter and my wife Nancy. We're both, we're both on the line, Larry Potter and Nancy Potter. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we're just listening in. Thank you for the opportunity. I don't think we have anything to add, though.
Thank you.
Please state your address, Mr. Potter.
137 Noank Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Hi, Elizabeth Lutz. I'm at 2 Fort Rachel Place. My property is across Noank Road on, on the, across the street from 143 Noank, which abuts the backyard of this proposed addition. And I can see the house with the proposed, the eight Ashby from my property. But what I really am concerned about is the incredible obstruction it will cause to my neighbor across at 143 Noank. I think Mr. Terrell also spoke to the same issue, but to, to have this much larger towering building, basically like a skyscraper above her property, will be just such a, such a different feeling for the neighborhood. It, it almost feels like all of a sudden we're in New York City with skyscraper over the top. So that's what I wanted to say is that moving it to four feet from the back of the property line, of, you know, so much, so close to this incredible, the cliff-like retaining wall seems not only dangerous, but also really intrusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, is there anybody else who wants to speak?
I do not believe so. There's a Rob Spencer. Let me see.
I see Mrs. Spencer.
No, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see Mrs. Hammer. Does your shoe easeless speak? Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none, Mr. Frank Stilwell, could you care to address, address the concerns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to share the screen again. Okay, there was some concerns about runoff. So what's going to happen here is presently you have sort of a flat area back in here. This is the low point. And then this little retaining wall with this large retaining wall sticks up and captures the water to a point. At some points it might flow over that. So it's taking all the water from here and sending it down here. In this new design where we're putting in a retaining wall here, we now have captured this area, the water in this area, and we can, we can do a dry well under the driveway and use a pervious material so that we now retain water right here. And we can also take the water that comes off the roof, the, of the house and throw that into a detention area underneath the driveway right in here. So I think from a runoff standpoint, we can actually improve the situation. And then I think similarly, we can put another retention area below grade down here to capture all the water that ponds down here. What, what happens here is this retaining wall kind of holds the water on the site. And if we add an additional sort of little reservoir underneath the ground, we can, we can hold that water longer and let it leach into the ground over a period of time. So I think we can improve whatever is happening out there right now from that standpoint. And then there was a question about compaction of the soils here. So we're definitely concerned about supporting this building properly and we will take all the engineering measures necessary to make sure that these soils will support this structure. And also what you're going to see is we're going to build a frost wall under this, so that will go down about four feet below grade. And then when you run the structural load point from that at a 45-degree angle, we will be below the bottom of this retaining wall. So we will not be imposing any loads, additional loads on the retaining wall. And also by taking in this And also, by taking in this water at these two locations, we'll be able to reduce the saturated soil load on to that retaining wall. So we, I think, are gonna make things better net. The deck itself isn't that heavy an object, that'll be on piers, the impact of that on the retaining wall would be negligible. Then there were some questions about the HTC. We did go before HTC informally, and they made some suggestions, which we took into account, and I'm sure that we will be approved when we go back for a public hearing on that, if we get your blessings here. Then there's a question of, is it two stories or three stories? From the back, it is three stories, because you have a walkout basement and you have a sloping lot. But I will note that this property right here, and this property, and this property are all of the same magnitude. They appear to be one to one and a half stories on Ashby Street, but they drop off from the back. They all read as three stories on the back. So there's really no change in that, other than it's coming a little bit closer. And you will note that this house here, the distance from this house to this house is less than where our addition will be to this house. You'll also note that this house here, 147, there's a rear property line, they're non-conforming in the rear property line, looks like they're about maybe six or seven feet. And similar situation over here, we have a lot of non-conformities, look how close these houses are. So there's
You can tell me.
A context in this neighborhood that I think we're well within.
I heard you.
This sounds stupid.
No, it wasn't.
Somebody's unmuted there and talking. So again, the context of what we're proposing in this neighborhood is not unlike what's there already. Fortunately, on this side of our proposal, these are bigger lots, there's lots of space there. But this is a cozy little section here, I don't think we're changing it that much, really. And I believe that covers all the points. Yes, that covers all my points. We did also talk to the neighbors up on Ashby Street, and we didn't get any pushback from the neighbors up there. And that's it.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody from the public wish to add anything else? Is there anybody in the public who would wish to add anything else, in response to Mr. Springstil's?
Well, I guess, yeah, I'd like to reiterate.
This is Mr. Tremont?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Tom Tremont, 147 Noank Road. Yep, the encroachment of my house on the property line was there when I bought it, and the house next to me is actually one house down, I guess it's maybe 150, whatever, where Jamie and Brenda live, that, they're actually on my property. You know, I understand all of that, and, you know, these houses were built a long time ago. But, you know, I don't want to make a tough situation worse by, you know, building yet another three stories right on the, right on the, on the property line. I don't think that's ideal, it isn't, it isn't what we strive for. You know, this isn't New York, this is a New York condo. You know, we're, we'd like to have, you know, a cozy neighborhood, but not one where, you know, people are on top of other people. And I think that's really the crux of the situation. You know, we can build anything today. You know, you could put in footings and deep footings, and you can do water runoff and pumps and so forth and so on. You can solve all of those problems. What we're talking about is privacy, aesthetics, a character of the neighborhood. You know, that's the, that's the fabric that I'm concerned about, not the, you know, so much whether we can accomplish this. And I'm sure it can be. And again, there are other solutions, there's other ways to go. And I, and I think that should be considered, rather than, you know, getting to a point where the very rear yard is gone. I mean, there is none, you know, like they did back in the day, 1850. So, you know, I don't think we have to do that. I think we can do better. And, and that's what I'd like to see happen. Just do better. Just, you know, don't encroach, don't, you know, hover over the neighbors below. I'm sure the people on Ashby across the street, they don't care, right? It's not their backyard, they're not looking at it, it's our backyard. So we are concerned, and, and I think it's intrusive. And I, you know, respectfully ask you to decline to give that variance. The other ones seem to be, you know, something that won't destroy the, you know, anybody's aesthetic view, parian rights, et cetera. So.
Mr. Tremont?
Yes.
Which variance are you opposed to?
The rear yard.
The rear yard setback, okay. For the deck, for the deck, right? Okay, thank you.
Well, it's the deck and, and the addition. You know, there's a deck there now, there's the original house, and then there's a deck. And what we're, what we're looking at is, is saying, well, the deck that was there was a structure. Well, it wasn't a three-story structure, it was a deck. And, and we lived with that, and it's okay, and it was granted years ago to Irving, who used to live there. You know, but it wasn't a three-story addition. It was a deck. And so, you know, let's recognize that, that this is a three-story addition. It's going vertical right off of a 10-foot-high retaining wall. And, and, you know, and eliminating, virtually eliminating the setback. You know, there's reasons, again, for, for rear yard zoning. Because people don't want to be looking out their back window, or in their back window, or in their backyards, having somebody right there. This is magnified by the fact that it's 10 feet above us to begin with. And it's gonna go straight up another, you know, 30 feet. I, it's just intrusive. And I believe changes the character of, of, of Noank Road, looking up from Noank Road and looking up at Ashby.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any comment?
Thank you.
I do.
Well, I'm not looking for the public right now.
Oh, okay.
Hang on, Doug.
I do have something else to respond to that.
Okay, Peter. Yes.
Hold on, gonna share the screen again. I just want to say that, I'm sorry. There are, there are other solutions to this, to get a similar-sized addition, and as the neighbor suggested, is we could, we could build over here. It wouldn't be totally conforming, it would eliminate the parking spaces. And in my view, it would be more of an imposition on their view, because basically, we'd be extending that three-story mass all the way across here, as opposed to limiting it from here to here. So there's other implications of adding on in this area, we did look at that. And I think those are the things you really need to consider in why we placed it here. That's my response.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody else in the public have any comments?
Yeah, Elizabeth Lutz, again, 2 Fort Rachel Place, I just wanted to add to what Mr. Tremont said. That is, the, the deck that Irving had on the back of his house, which was already a variance, was not, did not come out nearly as far as the proposed addition. And then, in addition to the proposed addition, another deck, so it is substantially larger footprint on the property, and then, of course, as a, as an obstruction to the, to the neighbors, and intrusion on the neighbors.
Thank you, Mrs. Lutz. Anybody else? Tom, Manny, do we have anything in the file for planning commission?
I didn't see anything, Tom. Zanarini?
Oh, yes. Yes, we do, let me get to it. Just received it today. From December 9th, memorandum from the Planning and Zoning Commission. At its meeting on December 8th, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the referral list and made the following comment. The Planning and Zoning Commission had concerns about the need for the northern side yard setback variance. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anybody else in the public, anybody on the board have any questions of Peter?
I do.
Doug?
Can I ask a question to Mr. Tremont first, or is that not allowed?
Sure.
Mr. Tremont, you there?
Yes.
Just looking at the plans here, looking up from your property, it seems like you're looking right now at a three-story building up behind you, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, when they add on whatever addition is proposed, it doesn't go any higher, it's just coming closer to your backyard, as I read the plans, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and my, my familiarity with that neighborhood is mostly when I'm riding my bike, so I know when I go by your house on Noank Road, I'm going downhill. And I know when I'm going up Ashby Street, I'm going uphill, so that
Right.
That's why it's, it seems to tower above you, because you're going, going down to you and going up to 8 Ashby, is that pretty much the way it is?
No, no, my perspective from my backyard is, you know, from my backyard is what I'm talking about, not, you know, yeah, it's what I see from my backyard.
You're way downhill, and he's, and he's way uphill, when, when you're starting, and then you're building on top, to exacerbate that issue, correct?
His, right, his, but their proposal is to exacerbate that issue. The house that's directly in back of my house, 147 Noank Road, is separated by a lot, well, probably an unbuildable lot, although someday they may want to build on it. So it's set back quite a bit. And, you know, I'm not, I, I don't, it's not the best site of planning, I, you know, that I would wish for, that's for sure. I would prefer that that house weren't, weren't three stories, and, and, you know, that I had more of a, a view of, of the sky in my backyard. Yeah, so by doing, by continuing the, to do that kind of thing, and this one, you know, this proposal at 8 Ashby is to actually bring the house right up to the property, right up to the rear property line, right on top, you know, well, four feet, four feet. You know, so, yeah, why make a situation, you know, more, of truth? You know, and I think there are other ways, you know, Peter, I guess is his name, you know, offered, well, maybe we could do this, and the mass would be a little bit different. Yeah, I, I think there's other ways, you know, there's other ways of approaching this problem, without, without going right onto that.
Thank you, Mr. Tremont.
I have one question for Peter then, or two questions, I guess. The retaining wall around the whole property, is that owned and maintained by the owners of 8 Ashby Street?
It is on that, it is on the 8 Ashby Street property.
So they, they're responsible for maintaining that, is that correct?
If it's on their property, they are responsible, yes.
Okay. And then, from your perspective as the architect, drawing that, your, the initial presentation and your, and your presentation that showed existing and then rear view was very, was kind of helpful to me. It looks to me like you're not going up any higher when, when you, from the, the rear view.
Right, this is our height right today from the rear, and then this is our new height, slightly lower, not that much, but it's no higher.
No higher, just more mass, correct? Just more mass up in the, the upper right-hand corner.
Right. And so, my fear, my fear, if you take this mass and put it over here, it's gonna appear as a bigger building from down below.
Instead of want them to have a structural engineer look at the wall, make sure it's fine, and then, you know. We're far enough away, those other houses are closer, so I can see why.
Is there some, anybody else else who's speaking?
Yeah, Nancy Potter's speaking, but she, she's not muted. Peter, you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, okay. So if you were to put it on the, on the south side there, over where the, the parking is gonna be, then you've got a lot broader mass.
That's right.
And then you gotta decide if you can go up that high or not, depending on what, what happens here, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
You lose the parking, which I think is a, is a big deal for the owners and for the community.
No, parking is a big deal, and that's no question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have anything else? Board members have any questions?
Actually, well, yeah, before you close, are you getting ready to close the hearing?
Yes.
I'd ask Peter if he, before we do that, if he'd be willing to discuss these issues with the neighbor who objects, and see if they can come up with a compromise, or no, I'd ask that.
Well, I know the owner's listening in, and he would, they would have to be the ones to agree to that, and Ryan, I don't know if you're there, but if you want to come on and let us know your thoughts about that.
Yeah, can you hear me, Peter?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, we actually have talked to many of the neighbors, and have gone over the plans and design of what we were gonna do, and, and actually showed Peter's plans prior to even Peter sending them out, so they were all happy with it, as a matter of fact, the one to the, so if you're, if you're looking at 8 Ashby, the one to the right, Mr. Kerr and his wife live there, Jeff Kerr and his wife live there, they actually would like to do the same thing with the parking. They have no parking at their house either, so they'd like to look in to be able to add that parking, to put their cars off the road, because they come home from the grocery store, and they can't even find a place to, to park their car in the front of their house on Saturday, so they have to drive around the neighborhood or around the town, and then hope somebody moves, so they, so that they can find parking, so the, the parking is, is a huge thing, and all the neighbors even actually agreed to it. And they, they liked it, that we were putting the parking in there, and I didn't hear any other negative feedback, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but from any of the other neighbors.
Well, I think my Rosario's question was, would you be willing, along with Peter, to discuss some of the issues with Mrs. Tremont?
Yeah, listen, I'm, I'm, I currently, just so everybody understands, I currently am in construction management, so I, I agree with all, I, I understand what Mr. Tremont's saying, and perhaps it's part of my fault, only because the drawings look bigger than what the house is really gonna be, and that was from my visual conception, because my eyes aren't as good as they used to be, but I'm willing to work with anybody. And as far as moving in or living in a historic society and keeping all up, I currently live in one now in Glassamere, and that's kind of the same rapport, is what we're looking to move down there and make this our, our retirement home, if you will, so that's kind of the whole point behind this, this project, so I'm, I'm, I have no problem talking with anybody or discussing anything, I'm not looking to ruffle anybody's feathers by any stretch of the imagination. I'm not looking to, to ruffle anybody's feathers by any stretch of the imagination.
Mr. Tremont?
Yes.
Would you be willing to discuss this further with Mr. Harman?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
I, I think what Mr. Rosaro was leading toward is that rather than either withdraw or, uh, put himself up for any rejection, is to continue this to the January meeting. What are your thoughts, Scott?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we give it people the, everyone the opportunity to maybe, instead of have to deal with an, with a, a black and white, uh, either or issue, that maybe there's something that they could discuss a little bit further and come to an agreement on. Maybe not everything, but, um, I think the closer they could come to some kind of an agreement, would make it easier for us to, to, uh, entertain the, the application.
So you would be in favor of, uh, postponing this until January meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, keep, keep the.
Continue, continue.
Excuse me, continue the, uh, the, the meeting until, when is it? January what? When's the next one?
Uh, January thirteenth.
January thirteenth.
Okay, we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Doug.
And can I just ask a question if I could? Um, this is Ryan Harmon again.
Oh, yes, Mr. Harmon.
Yeah, it's only because you, uh, uh, on my end, and, and, and I understand what everybody's talking about here, but on my end, I have a, I have a contract also with a, with a, uh, a builder to actually do the work. So of course, it's going to cost me to, to postpone it, which, I understand that's my responsibility to anybody else's. But is there a way to, to push this up? I mean, I'm, 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 I'm willing to get on a phone tomorrow or I, I can actually drive down there tomorrow to meet anybody if they want to meet on site and talk about it as well. But I don't know if there's a way to, to, to push this up just, just to, uh, so that I can move forward here. So I'm not, uh, uh, paying any more money than I have to, if, if that makes any sense.
Uh, your thought makes sense, but I don't know if true that we can do anything. Uh, this is our only meeting for the month of, uh, December. And, uh, so it would have to go into January. Tom Zanari, you have any thoughts?
Unless you want to entertain a special meeting.
Uh, certainly not Christmas week, that's for sure. What are the board members' thoughts, Scott? Scott?
It's going to be at least three weeks, right?
Yeah. Well, the only way Tom Zanari was discussing was possibly a special meeting. Sometime between now and January thirteenth. Would you be interested in that or not? So there's only one week to go before Christmas week. And then on this one, it'll go a special meeting on Christmas or New Year's week.
Ed, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I'm not going anywhere for a long time here with this pandemic. So I, I can, I could do it anytime. It's not a big deal, you know? If you wanted to move it up, I'm, I'm, I'm amenable to that. I don't know about Peter and whether he thinks he could get something done expeditiously, he's sitting down with parties. I don't know. That's the, that's the crux of the issue at this point.
Well, I don't get a great consensus, Senator, but he's really willing, other than Doug, to have a special meeting, especially during the holiday time. So I think at this point, unless Tom Zanari has any other ideas, that we should keep it for December, uh, January thirteenth.
It would be up to the members. I mean, that the only other option is if you scheduled a, a, a special meeting.
Well, next week is the only week that it could be done, because the following week is Christmas and then New Year's. Then we're going to, uh, January. So we're almost there, maybe you. So that would be January second. I don't think that's going to work.
Hey, Ed, would, uh, would postponing or having a special meeting next week, postponing this or continuing it till next week, would that allow the applicant and the butters, uh, to come together with Peter Springstil and, uh, resolve, resolve or at least come to a common ground? Or maybe they won't?
We could, we could certainly meet in that timeframe, um, depending upon what comes out of that meeting. If, for instance, if we're going to change things significantly on the drawings and then there's no way I'll have that together by next week.
No, no, okay. So the next two, uh, so I personally say we should just wait until January, what is it, thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
Yeah.
There's a motion that's seconded on the floor for the, to just post, continue to thirteen.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Doug, your, your vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Bill? Tom and myself.
Yeah, I'm aye.
So what can, what, for, yes?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. I forgot you were there. Okay.
Forget.
Did I get, um, Peter, uh, Springstil, can I get your telephone number, Peter? Uh, Tom Tremont, uh?
Sure.
Can I get your telephone number?
Sure, it's eight six zero five seven two seven three zero six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will conclude the public hearing at, uh, eight thirty-nine. Okay, gentlemen, we're ready to go back into, uh, discuss the Grotton Middle School sign. And if the public would, uh, welcome to remain, but you can't say anything. Okay, let's start off, Scott.
I, I don't have any problems with the sign application at all. I'm, it, uh, it's a little mind-boggling to me that we can put, um, the applicants through this kind of a wringer. And it doesn't, from the little research I've done, that, that the, uh, Grotso Tech sign had to go through any of this. I, I know the zoning regulations have changed somewhat, but it doesn't appear they've changed that much. And, and how we can justify the Grotso Tech sign and then tell us the town, the school sign can't be there or has to be modified in different ways. It makes no sense to me. So, um, I'm in favor of approving their variance request.
Bill Vosser? Bill?
I, I think that, uh, Scott said that all very well. I, it, it's sort of amazing that we're positioned. Um, but, um, I agree, let's move forward. Uh, I would support the application as presented.
Tom Fanning?
Uh, my comments are probably if we go back to the original meeting, what went through my mind was, well, the other sign for the park is a town sign. Why don't they get together, figure that one out? So they don't need three signs, that part of the, uh, request. And that's been done. The other thing is the fact that nobody from the town had at least gone to the state. I'm not surprised that they didn't get any comment, but at least go to do that before the meeting came about, put me at a little, you know, uncomfortable, where, why that wasn't done. It's been done now. You didn't get any response from the state. That doesn't surprise me. And it, but it's unfortunate, you know, but it, I understand that at the time when the, the sign for the state was being proposed, we weren't even thinking about this thing relative to a Grotton school using the same right of way. So I personally have no problem with the request as stated this time.
Okay, Mr. Carvitz?
I have no problem with it either.
Okay, I think, uh, Tom said it all. They have to go back and, uh, address our concerns and, uh, okay, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variances as requested.
Okay, sir, a second. Do, Nathan, Scott, seconded by Bill. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye, Scott.
Aye.
Bill, Tom, Troy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. All right, that ends the, uh, the next item was the residence, but that's postponed to January thirteenth. The next thing would be correspondence. Tom Zanari?
Uh, there is no correspondence.
Okay. And I see those in your package were minutes from October twenty-eighth. And what, a lot of trees did here. Okay, October twenty-eighth. I can't find the minutes. Uh, anybody, anybody gone through the minutes and care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes that submitted.
That's true, it's twenty-eighth. Okay, fine, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next were minutes from, uh, November fourteenth, I believe. The motion. Okay, do you motion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the minutes that submitted.
Okay. Second, somebody?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay. Next thing we have is old business. Tom?
There is no old business.
How about new?
There's no new business.
Oh, that's good. Well, uh, reported staff.
There is no staff report.
Merry Christmas, everybody. We'll call, motion adjourned?
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourned.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, all, have a nice Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Nice holiday, folks.
Take care, everyone.
Hi, everybody.
Bye, Carol.
Merry Christmas.
All along, guys. And girls.